The fifth bullet point on meeting norms, it says be acknowledged by the board president prior to making a comment. Now, this has been violated several times by board members, and on one occasion by yourself when I was asking questions after you had called on me and recognized me to have a floor, and then you attempted to interrupt my questioning so that we could give a different board member time to ask questions. And that wasn't consistent, not just with the meeting norms, but it wasn't consistent with Robert's Rules of Order or the Brown Act. The seventh bullet point, be respectful of others. When board members taunt other board members, that would fall under that category. And avoid side conversations. Our DVDs will show that there are side conversations going on between you and Mr. Arada at several if not all of the meetings. So, it's recorded, so that would show it. But that is something that I've noticed, and it doesn't demonstrate their attentive to the public comments when he's talking, or to even the board members while they're asking questions. Be respectful of an audience. You know, so time when you argued with a member of the community because you didn't agree with what they had said, so that doesn't support that meeting norm that you placed here.
You know, Ms. Canciola, I...
See, hold on, hold on. See, now you're interrupting me.
Yes, I am.
This is a board norm that you want us to follow, and I'm pointing out where...
You also have to...
And I'm pointing out that this is an example that we're being recorded to show that this is my time to speak. You acknowledged me, I have the floor, and now I'm bringing up these issues because part of the problem with these really great norms is that they don't have any... There's nothing to hold a board member accountable for violating these norms. Now, don't get me wrong, I have definitely violated some of these on a regular basis.
Correct, I'm glad you said that.
So, that's my point. Why have these when they're already in the board bylaws, when they're already covered under Robert's Rules of Order and the Brown Act? The other thing, it talks about here about giving up a right. And when I think about giving up the right to speak at a board meeting, I think about when an officer knocks on your door and he asks to come in, and you let him in. He doesn't have a right to be there. He hasn't demonstrated that he has reasonable suspicion or probable cause, but that doesn't matter because guess what? You let him in, you gave him consent. And when you asked us to give up our right to free speech at board meetings, that's a violation of our basic First Amendment right.
I don't really know where you're going with that.
Well, I'm going with the fact that I don't agree...
You know, Ms. Canciola, we can spend...
Miss Dionne.
Uh-huh. We can spend the rest of the meeting where you are going to be picking and arguing with people and...
I'm not arguing with anyone.
And the thing is, is that we as board members, you have been missing our board meetings for a long time.
A month, two months.
And here you...
And that's because of the death of my mother, and my uncle has cancer. But that's besides the point because other board members have missed several board meetings, not just the regular board meetings when they've had family issues, but our special board meetings for no reason. We had one board member miss out of 24 meetings, they missed all except for three. So, I totally get it, and I'm not arguing with anybody. If you seem to think I'm arguing, that's fine.
No, I just don't want to...
What I'm trying to say would be...
I don't want to spend precious time in the meeting so they can recap everything.
I know, because today... Right, but that's because your son's birthday is today, the 21st birthday. I'm sure you'd like to get back to the party.
No, no, there's no party going on at all.
But the point is, is that what I'm trying to say...
Okay, we're gonna move on.
No, we're not, because I'm not done. You gave me the floor, let me finish what I have to say, and we can move on. If the other board members want to sign away their rights, let them sign away their rights, but I can go point by point and explain to them why there's faults with your protocols and your norms.
This is our protocols and norms.
And, right, well, it's the ones that you want us to agree to.
I think we're not really wanting to do that.
See, now, hold on a minute. I never know when ever else to give up the floor. I have not given up the floor, I still have the floor.
I have one request, would you take order of the meeting?
No.
Yeah, enough, that's...
No, no, it's not enough because there's a board that's here.
Okay, we're going to move on, Ms. Canciola.
The board understands the distinctions between the board and staff rules and will refrain from performing management functions that are the responsibility of the superintendent. And I know for a fact that you have violated that norm and protocol on a regular basis thereby...
That's not true.
That is true. Well, how do you know? You don't know what I know.
Ms. Canciola...
And now he's arguing with me. So, my point is, is that I said what I said, I'm not gonna sign this for exactly the same reasons that the question that Dr. Merino had. Oh, this is all nice and perhaps, but when you actually asked the specific question that Dr. Merino asked, "How do you do this?", there was no answer. We didn't really stop and think about it because all of the things that have been going on in the last two months that I've missed, the meetings, I had no communication with anybody other than the superintendent's Friday update about what was going on. And believe me, a lot has been going on based on the magnet school and these norms and protocols, and I'm not being informed. So, that tells me that there's a problem with this. And it should tell you also, Dr. Merino, because your questions were spot on and they were not answered.
These boards and protocols were approved by the board already. So, if something has been approved by the majority board, I'm just reviewing them.
Well, why?
This was brought up at the board meeting.
It's ready for the...
It's approved.
It's ready for the second reading. So, I knew that, and it's gonna come up at the second meeting, and that's when it's approved.
Well, we're a many board member, you said, running the board. I'd like to recommend to the board that what happened in the past, previous board members, just the last, in the past, we have a lot of work ahead of us with this term lead, with some new start. It is good that we're going over the protocols, and I'm suggesting that we probably talk about if we see a violation of the protocols, then we approach it proactively, constructively. We don't have time to engage in arguments and discussions that really are not in the best interest of kids and for what we're elected to be here. I understand that, yeah, there are problems, and I know problems will surface in the future. So, my concern is, when I violate something, I really don't want to be...
Put on the bar?
No, no, admonished or berated in any way. I'm an adult, I'm a professional, I can certainly take constructive criticism. But really, you know, one of the bullets here, I'm not sure which ones, is keep the discussion moving.
... district special board meeting to order, the meeting of January 28, 2016, and we will get started with the roll call. Aurora Villon present. Jose Lada is going to be here a little bit, probably by 5:30, he had an emergency he needed to take care of. Dr. Teresa Merino.
President.
Ms. Encho Canciola.
Here.
Mr. Gabriel Orozco.
Present.
Members of the administrative cabinet, Mr. Mark Galindo.
Here.
Okay, then we're going to proceed to the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Canciola, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes. Where you can, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Canciola, can you lead...
I do have an affidavit. I have invited a guest to videotape the open session, and so I just wanted to make sure it's on the record that Mr. Ramirez will be here recording just the study session portion of the meeting as soon as it goes to closed session. He will leave.
Okay, and who are you with?
Ms. Canciola.
I don't mind anything.
Is he with... Because he had shared with me that he was with group and Leo Ondo, so I was...
Right, I was here for some of those questions that you asked, and I saw that he had said yes. And to be quite honest, I really don't know about that other than from this point forward, he's still at my request.
Oh, okay. And what is your name again?
Randy Ramirez.
Okay, Randy. Okay, so at this point, do I have... Let's move on over to item number three, adoption of the agenda, 3A. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda of the January 28 meeting? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Dr. Merino?
Yes.
Ms. Canciola?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Villon, yes. Okay, forward to approve the agenda as presented. Okay, move over to item number four, public comments. I don't have... We don't have a public, I don't have any speaker cards, so we're gonna move over right over to the study session, number five study session, review of Board of Education and Superintendent norms and protocols. And we have a copy of that. And basically, we all had an opportunity to review this, to make a few changes, and I don't know if you were with us during that meeting, Ms. Canciola.
No, I was not.
Okay, so some minor changes. Do... And the reason I wanted to review this board of protocols and norms is because we do have two new board members, and I just wanted to review with the two of you that, you know, whenever in the board bylaws has that as well, whenever we're in the community and if we... I'm hearing really great ideas coming from board members, so is Mr. Galindo. And one of the things that we want to be able to establish as many partnerships as we can in the community, but one of the things we need to keep in mind that if your idea, how can I say, if you bring in a great idea and I hear about it, my response is always gonna be, we need to take it to the board. Because especially when we have ideas that would involve any kind of, how can I say, liability to the board. So, you are welcome, you represent... We are representing the community, we're welcome to go out there and if you have your ideas on and you have your great ideas, we welcome those great ideas. We bring them back to the board so we can process them. And what I would like to suggest, and this is the way I like to work, is whenever we're gonna make a decision about something, I would like all the information to be put in front of us before we make a decision. And one that comes to my mind is the usage of our facilities. We have established an facilities committee that will look at that, but the ultimate decision would be the board's. I'm all in favor of doing joint projects with the understanding that the district is covered as far as any type of liability, anything that will happen, and then if we are in partnership with the city, that we share the liability with whatever partners we're working with. So, unless all the information comes to the board, I don't see any of us making any decisions until we have everything in front of us. And that goes for any project we might have. I know we had some ideas of offering a class with Long Beach, other things that would involve some decision-making, and we bring it to the board, and from here, we, I mean, at the board meeting, we decide whether it's something that we want to be involved or not. And if it's for our community, I don't think you will find, well, unless I'm wrong, I don't think you'll find any board members that will object to providing more services to our families and our students. Okay, Dr. Merino?
Just checking for understanding. So, in our conversations with other people in the community, as board members, we just hold a conversation, oh, sorry, we understand we're in the process, we'll commit because each individual one of you can't vote. So, we are to bring this information for these idea suggestions to the board, then collectively the board will make a decision. Is that...
Well, let me give an example. I know that the conversation of using some of our schools has come up, and it's a great idea, and Mr. Orozco sort of initiated those conversations. But if I hear great ideas, I don't bring all the great ideas to the board, I like to have some background, some information that would allow us to make an informed decision. And so, I go to Mr. Galindo and I said, "These are the questions, you know, I have these questions, I want to know liability, I want to know all of this." So, there has to be some homework done prior to coming, bringing it to the board because we can... If it comes to us, I'm gonna have a lot of questions. So, there needs to be some fact finding that Mr. Galindo will be doing, or Mr. Futos, or whoever, if this team is involved. And we can bring an item to the board for discussion unnecessarily to make a decision, but I would suggest that if we're gonna be asked to make a decision, that we have all the information, all the background before we can decide. Mr. Orozco?
That point of question was, I thought that's what I was doing, by communicating with you to get all the information and have all the facts before we brought it to the board. That's what I do.
Okay.
So, what I'm asking or acquiring or, you know, and then we're on a time constraint because our season, we're having trial Saturday, so the season's gonna sort of start practicing. And so, the kids and the community, they're gonna want these films. It alleviates a lot of stress because there's too many... Anyways, I don't want to do that. Just, I thought that's what I was doing, right? Talking to him, that's what he was doing, getting information, gathering all the facts. That's what he was doing. I wasn't telling him what I was doing, although I was under the impression that it was already approved last year because last year when I went as a manager to go use one of his school sites, I decided to fill out a facility use permit, but I was stopped by principal because he said I couldn't play baseball on the field. So, that's what I thought I was doing.
Ms. Canciola, then Dr. Merino?
I have different... Dr. Merino first. Go ahead and ask your question, please, Dr. Merino.
Well, okay. So, yes, I'm not real clear on the process. All the conversations and... Go ahead and plan, but we really can't move forward until we come to the board. In the meantime, we are to give, do our homework, do all the footwork, do the necessary, and then bring it to the board, we send all the information that I have gathered, and then post it before the board for a vote. Is that correct?
Well, I think also, and I'm just gonna answer, just address this, Ms. Canciola, and then you can take the floor. I think that's another reason why we have established the EDHAP committee, or it's already really established, because at that point, we could be part of those conversations and then bring the recommendations to the board, just like the facilities master plan.
Okay, yeah.
And then we will bring, like, for example, the RFPs, we interview companies, we decide that we have two companies we're recommending, we bring the recommendation to the board and say, "Out of the RFP process, this is who we're recommending." And the same thing would work for the facilities. The final decision would be the board's decision.
My thoughts and concerns are that, like you said at the very beginning, Ms. Villon, is that these norms and protocols are covered under the board bylaws. They're already there. And what I've noticed is that not, while everyone is asked to sign it, there's some fundamental problems in that meetings don't always start on time and then turn in. It's because certain board members are late pretty much regularly, and we wait five or 10 minutes for that board member to show up. And so, we have already a pre-designated time for a board meeting, and we all know what that meeting time is, and we're all respectful to acknowledge that time and to show up. Secondly, I have to take issue with the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. The fifth bullet point on meeting norms, it says be acknowledged by the board president prior to making a comment. Now, this has been violated several times by board members, and on one occasion by yourself when I was asking questions after you had called on me and recognized me to have a floor, and then you attempted to interrupt my questioning so that we could give a different board member time to ask questions. And that wasn't consistent, not just with the meeting norms, but it wasn't consistent with Robert's Rules of Order or the Brown Act. The seventh bullet point, be respectful of others. When board members taunt other board members, that would fall under that category. And avoid side conversations. Our DVDs will show that there are side conversations going on between you and Mr. Arada at several if not all of the meetings. So, it's recorded, so that would show it. But that is something that I've noticed, and it doesn't demonstrate their attentive to the public comments when he's talking, or to even the board members while they're asking questions. Be respectful of an audience, you know? So, time when you argued with a member of the community because you didn't agree with what they had said, so that doesn't support that meeting norm that you placed here.
You know, Ms. Canciola, I...
See, hold on, hold on. See, now you're interrupting me.
Yes, I am.
This is a board norm that you want us to follow, and I'm pointing out where...
You also have to...
And I'm pointing out that this is an example that we're being recorded to show that this is my time to speak. You acknowledged me, I have the floor, and now I'm bringing up these issues because part of the problem with these really great norms is that they don't have any... There's nothing to hold a board member accountable for violating these norms. Now, don't get me wrong, I have definitely violated some of these on a regular basis.
Correct, I'm glad you said that.
So, that's my point. Why have these when they're already in the board bylaws, when they're already covered under Robert's Rules of Order and the Brown Act? The other thing, it talks about here about giving up a right. And when I think about giving up the right to speak at a board meeting, I think about when an officer knocks on your door and he asks to come in, and you let him in. He doesn't have a right to be there. He hasn't demonstrated that he has reasonable suspicion or probable cause, but that doesn't matter because guess what? You let him in, you gave him consent. And when you ask us to give up our right to free speech at board meetings, that's a violation of our basic First Amendment right.
I don't really know where you're going with that.
Well, I'm going with the fact that I don't agree...
You know, Ms. Canciola, we can spend...
Miss Dionne.
Uh-huh. We can spend the rest of the meeting where you are going to be picking and arguing with people and...
I'm not arguing with anyone.
And the thing is, is that we as board members, you have been missing our board meetings for a long time.
A month, two months.
And here you...
And that's because of the death of my mother, and my uncle has cancer. But that's besides the point because other board members have missed several board meetings, not just the regular board meetings when they've had family issues, but our special board meetings for no reason. We had one board member miss out of 24 meetings, they missed all except for three. So, I totally get it, and I'm not arguing with anybody. If you seem to think I'm arguing, that's fine.
No, I just don't want to...
What I'm trying to say would be...
I don't want to spend precious time in the meeting so they can recap everything.
I know, because today... Right, but that's because your son's birthday is today, the 21st birthday. I'm sure you'd like to get back to the party.
No, no, there's no party going on at all.
But the point is, is that what I'm trying to say...
Okay, we're gonna move on.
No, we're not, because I'm not done. You gave me the floor, let me finish what I have to say, and we can move on. If the other board members want to sign away their rights, let them sign away their rights, but I can go point by point and explain to them why there's faults with your protocols and your norms.
This is our protocols and norms.
And, right, well, it's the ones that you want us to agree to. In fact, there's one year... See, now, hold on a minute. I never know when ever else to give up the floor. I have not given up the floor, I still have the floor.
I have one request, would you take order of the meeting?
No.
Yeah, enough, that's...
No, no, it's not enough because there's a board that's here.
Okay, we're going to move on, Ms. Canciola.
The board understands the distinctions between the board and staff rules and will refrain from performing management functions that are the responsibility of the superintendent. And I know for a fact that you have violated that norm and protocol on a regular basis thereby...
That's not true.
That is true. Well, how do you know? You don't know what I know.
Ms. Canciola...
And now he's arguing with me.
Ms. Canciola...
So, my point is, is that I said what I said, I'm not gonna sign this for exactly the same reasons that the question that Dr. Merino had. Oh, this is all nice and perhaps, but when you actually asked the specific question that Dr. Merino asked, "How do you do this?", there was no answer. We didn't really stop and think about it because all of the things that have been going on in the last two months that I've missed, the meetings, I had no communication with anybody other than the superintendent's Friday update about what was going on. And believe me, a lot has been going on based on the magnet school and these norms and protocols, and I'm not being informed. So, that tells me that there's a problem with this. And it should tell you also, Dr. Merino, because your questions were spot on and they were not answered.
These boards and protocols were approved by the board already. So, if something has been approved by the majority board, I'm just reviewing them.
Well, why?
This was brought up at the board meeting.
It's ready for the... It's ready for the second reading. So, I knew that, and it's gonna come up at the second meeting, and that's when it's approved.
Well, we're a many board member, you said, running the board. I'd like to recommend to the board that what happened in the past, previous board members, just the last, in the past, we have a lot of work ahead of us with this term lead, with some new start. It is good that we're going over the protocols, and I'm suggesting that we probably talk about if we see a violation of the protocols, then we approach it proactively, constructively. We don't have time to engage in arguments and discussions that really are not in the best interest of kids and for what we're elected to be here. I understand that, yeah, there are problems, and I know problems will surface in the future. So, my concern is, when I violate something, I really don't want to be...
Put on the bar?
No, no, admonished or berated in any way. I'm an adult, I'm a professional, I can certainly take constructive criticism. But really, you know, one of the bullets here, I'm not sure which ones, is keep the discussion moving. So, if this is what we voted on, let's move on. Yes, mistakes were made, the past is the past, but we, let's move forward and let's really stay focused, and let's address each one as adults, as professionals, constructively.
Ms. Villon?
Are you done?
Yes.
I absolutely agree. The past performance is an indicative, is an indication of what future performance will lead. And just right now today, rather than allowing me to go through my bullet points and take each issue norm by norm, Dr. Villon violated this very norm and protocol by interrupting me and then allowing Mr. Lada to interrupt me, and rather than just let me go through it, not so much because this has happened in the past, but because I don't want it to happen in the future. And I'm letting other board members, now that you're on the board, know that these have, this has occurred. Now, this goes for a second reading, so I don't know where it's changed where now this is all part of, it's been approved by four board members because I believe it has to go for the second reading according to board policy. So, I just wanted to bring it out. And I don't agree with this because I think that it takes away our rights. And I didn't get information, exactly what you were talking about, how do we bring things up? How do we get things done? You and I as individual board members, we don't have the right to tell Mr. Galindo to go check on something. We have to have it as a group discussion, and a majority of the board would then provide that direction. But when we have to go through one board member, which is a president, and then she decides whether or not it's a good information or a good suggestion, well, that's not...
Okay, enough, that's enough.
Excuse me, see, she's interrupting me again.
Ms. Canciola, I think I have a...
Dr. Merino?
All of the time because other board members have not had an opportunity to speak.
Ms. Villon, you offered me the floor.
Okay, I'm...
I'm addressing it, you called me, you cannot call it back because that's not part of Robert's Rules of Order. Please, you're violating Robert's Rules of Order. And I'm asking you to please follow the rules. You called on me to speak.
Okay, that's enough. Someone needs to have an opportunity to speak.
And they will as soon as I'm done. I've never ever heard you tell someone else not to speak.
Because they don't speak as much as you do, Ms. Canciola.
And that's because you aren't consistent with your rules and the way you govern this board. If you were consistent, then I wouldn't be bringing it up.
That's not true.
Nobody acknowledged you either.
I apologize.
Okay, we need to move on. Mr. Lada?
Yeah, that's not true. It's not true, and you're saying a lot of lies here.
I don't lie.
And I'm glad somebody's recording.
I don't lie.
And it's unfortunate that that's... Please don't interrupt me if you're gonna call upon me. And so, I mean, I really urge the board president to keep order in the meeting, and I support your decision to continue to keep order in the meeting. We need to move forward with these protocols, even if one board member doesn't want to acknowledge them. Either way, we have to maintain order as a meeting, we are professionals. We have to set, you know, we have to set a role model for our children. I mean, that's the most important thing that we have, and we have to try to follow as many, well, not as many, we have to try to follow all the rules as possible, but we have to try to be consistent with them as well. And nobody's perfect, I acknowledge that. And rules are gonna be broken because we're human beings and everybody makes errors.
Thank you for that.
Okay, everybody makes errors. But we have to have some sort of order and norms. So, I agree that if some of us are breaking the norms, breaking the rules, et cetera, you know, what's it called, admonishing other people in the public during a meeting, as just happened earlier, et cetera, that we have to be our own kind of like, check ourselves, right? We have to put a check on ourselves and make sure that doesn't happen. We have to put a check on ourselves and make sure that doesn't happen. But the reality is, is that, um, if the majority of the board is ready to move on or the majority of the board moves on, um, then we have to do what the majority of the board says, right? And that, that includes, um, that includes, um, sticking to the agenda, sticking to the topics on the agenda that, that we have. So, um, I support you, Dr. Dion, in making sure that, uh, we have order in this meeting.
I support you as well, Dr. Dion.
Uh, Mr. Orozco?
Uh, I think there's a motion that we move to go to the next item, I'm checking.
Can I have a second? Discussion? Stick a vote. Ms. Canciola?
Yeah.
Mr. Orozco?
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Merino?
Yeah.
Mr. Lara?
Yes.
Dion, yes. Okay, we'll move to the next item. Um, public comments and closed session items. I don't have any cards at this point. We'll agree to closed session.
Public fortune or to have public comments? But since it came all the way over here, I'm not sure if it would be in order to suspend the rules if they had a public comment at the time.[1788.86]